Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the informational meeting of Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. As we always do, we'll start it off with council remarks. Fellow council members? Seeing nobody?
I do. I've got a, I'm sorry, I've got a, uh... I went to the ESF Advisory Council, so I want to give a brief update on that. I don't see that on the agenda, but I will give a brief one because it's good news. Um, as everyone knows, I think that those groups of people suffered some of the most economically during, you know, the worst of our COVID experience, so it's good to share the news with you. Um, this is the ESF Board, um, the Advisory Board, and so we got a financial report. At the moment, they're $58,000 ahead of budget, but she said, "Don't get overly excited." There's, you know, revenue and expense issues and how they travel along each other, so it might not be, you know, that good at the end of the year, but at least at this moment, it's looking really good. Um, the occupancy, and again, this is with the hotel years, occupancy is bouncing all over, but generally, it's going in the right direction. Um, there's been record-breaking numbers at scheduled events, the ones that are coming back, and an example given was the lumbermen's event. Um, booking is increasing, especially in the next 24 months farther out. You know, people are still a little iffy farther out for some of the bigger things, but in the next 24 months, they're getting a lot of bookings. And then just some, um, oh, just, you know, some fun events, upcoming events. There's, you know, there was, there's going to be the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Um, there's going to be another brews, you know, the, the microbrews are all getting on board for another brews competition. And then just a little bit about the Burger Bash. Um, that was amazing. Twenty-seven restaurants participated, 44,000 burgers sold, $1.3 million in generated revenues. So just end on a positive note, and, um, thank you for that, but I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Anything else? Community reports or anything? All right, we'll jump into our first exciting presentation, the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. Holly Meyer and Josh Peterson.
All right, well, good afternoon. Uh, thanks for having us here. Uh, Josh Peterson, Environmental Services Manager in Public Works. Just going to give a brief kickoff here, then I'll bring up Holly. Just give some updates on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. Uh, this morning, we published the draft Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, uh, for public comment, uh, and had a presentation to, to share it with the media as well. So it is now live on our website, uh, and available for people to download and take a look at. This is a culmination of an 18-month process of collaboration with community stakeholders, business representatives, and city staff. And, and so today, we're going to give you a, a high-level overview of the, of the goals and the focus areas of the plan, but to kind of give a little bit of, uh, history, um, Sioux Falls is already a leader in conservation efforts. Uh, to date, we've implemented a number of sustainability, sustainability programs I'd like to just kind of highlight. The single-stream recycling program, uh, we have implemented with a current 20% waste reduction goal. Our water conservation program, helping the city ensure we have a adequate water supply. Our landfill gas collection system, which reduces our greenhouse gas emissions and also, uh, creates a revenue source for our landfill. Our partnership with the Big Sioux River Project, where we purchase easements along the banks of the river to reduce contaminated runoff. Our LED streetlight replacement program, uh, reduces energy needs while providing a higher quality brighter light for our safety of our streets. And finally, uh, our environmental center and household hazardous waste facility, taking, uh, electronics and hazardous materials out of the landfill and, and providing a reuse for them. So we've, we've already had, you know, a, a strong sustainability program in the past, and this is just a jumping-off point for us to move forward and continue our, our leadership in the region. So I'll bring up Holly Myers now to give you some specifics on the Climate, Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. Holly is our Sustainability Coordinator in Public Works, and she has a master's degree from the University of Minnesota in Natural Resources and Science Management. So, Holly, bring you up.
Good afternoon, council members. It's an honor to be here today to speak with you about the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. So we're going to kick it off by talking about what sustainability means, especially in the context that we're using it in this plan. Sustainability is based on the principle that everything humans need to survive is dependent upon our natural environment, whether directly or indirectly. And so to pursue sustainability means that we want to create or maintain the conditions under which humans and nature can productively coexist in order so we can be supported now and future generations can be also supported. And why this matters to us, um, well, it matters for a few reasons. Right now, locally and globally, we face significant and pressing sustainability and climate issues. Um, those are global, and they often manifest locally, and so local government is often, um, the entity that is dealing with these types of challenges. So this visual shows some of the challenges that we face right now. Everything from, uh, increasing temperatures to precipitation patterns changing, seeing an increased intensity and frequency of rainfall events and associated flooding, and then on the flip side, an increasing intensity and frequency of drought. Um, we're also a growing community, which has a lot of benefits, and it can have challenges if not done sustainably. We want to make sure that we are growing as a community, um, while protecting our natural areas and biodiversity that in turn supports our community. Another reason why we care about sustainability is because implementing a lot of these initiatives have what's called co-benefits. So not only do aspects of the plan help solve these challenges that we're facing, but they also bring forth additional quality of life, safety, and health benefits to the community. So for example, um, in the plan, we have a goal to add green infrastructure and trees. So these types of initiatives aid in stormwater management as we, we might see, um, additional flooding, but it also helps with, uh, social ties and community ties and community gathering space, and it also provides benefits for mental and physical health. And that's just one example. We also, you know, as we transition to cleaner energy, we not only reduce our greenhouse gas emissions overall, but that has immediate, um, benefits for air quality and for public health. So how do we address these challenges and reap the benefits? That was our charge with developing the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. We were given the go-ahead in October 2020. As Josh mentioned, it's been about an 18-month process, and it's been developed in large part with, um, community members and close collaboration with the community members. That's really been essential to the plan. And we've done that in two primary methods. The first one is developing a Sustainability Steering Committee made up of members from stakeholder groups that have key influence and a role in community-wide sustainability. So on our committee, um, the city of Sioux Falls was represented as well as the Chamber of Commerce, the Development Foundation, uh, educational institutions, industry, businesses, um, health institutions, and one of our largest utilities. And so their, uh, their seat at the table was really integral to make sure we had expertise from these various sectors. The other way we collaborated with the community was through our public engagement phases. Um, the first one we had was in April of 2021. That was during COVID, so we had to move online only, and we had a month-long, um, sustainability survey in April, and that was really tremendous because we had about 1,300 responses from the public, and it helped illustrate what people are thinking about in terms of sustainability. Uh, the next public engagement phase we had was in October of this past year. That's when we had our in-person open house at the downtown library. It was a three-hour event and really well-attended. About 140 people came, um, and it was non-stop conversation with community members about the draft plan that had been developed to date, as well as what they'd like to see changed, what they're concerned about, just continuing that conversation. And then the final public engagement period, as Josh mentioned, is happening now. So the draft Climate Sustainability and Climate Action Plan was posted on the city's website today and is open for public comment through the 21st of March. One of the things I wanted to note from the community engagement we've had was hearing really robust support for these efforts in the community. So in the survey, we asked a host of questions about specific, um, concerns, um, about areas of concern, but we also asked general questions, wanting to know if respondents are concerned in general. You know, are you thinking about these things? Are you concerned about environmental hazards in our region, like I mentioned, increasing temperatures, drought, flooding? We were wanting to know if people think addressing this is important for Sioux Falls, as well as if they think these issues are, are impacting them now and will impact future generations. And as you can see on the screen, the data shows, um, a large majority of respondents answered yes to all these questions. It is a concern. They want to see us doing more on these efforts, and they already think it's impacting their lives, and even more so will impact future generations. So moving to some of the content of the plan. The plan was driven by two foundational goals. The first one was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The targets set in the plan are to reduce emissions by 45% by 2030 and to achieve net zero emissions by 2050. These are science-based targets and are really important for our community to have, to be maintaining our leadership on these issues and addressing the aforementioned challenges that we face. Um, when we talk about greenhouse gases, primarily, we're talking about the, the gases that are emitted from burning fossil fuels like coal, oil, and gas for energy. And so reaching those emission targets, uh, in reaching those targets, we will really need to transition to clean renewable energy sources like solar, for example. The second foundational goal is to prioritize social equity. What we mean by this is that sustainability and climate challenges can disproportionately affect, um, our vulnerable populations in our community. And so when we're thinking about developing the plan and when we're going to implement the plan, we want to make sure that that's done equitably so all members of our community have access to the sustainability benefits. The sustainability plan, the content, is organized into six focus areas shown here. I'm not going to get into the details of each of these focus areas, but I think it's a good visual to show all the sectors that sustainability touches and the comprehensive nature of this plan. Each of these focus areas have specific goals, um, strategies, and actions that are aimed at addressing the challenges in there, um, and then bringing forth some of the co-benefits that we would achieve as well. And importantly, the, the goals and strategies that were included in here, that's where we used a lot of the feedback from community members and our steering committee members to form those based on their expertise and community concern. Priority actions. So the plan is very comprehensive. It's quite dense, um, and it addresses all those focus areas, but I did want to touch on a couple priority actions that will drive our, um, energies in the next few years. The first one is transitioning to clean energy and energy efficiency. Clean energy is really pivotal for addressing, um, our greenhouse gas emissions for meeting those targets, but also to, um, have public health outcomes, to improve public health, um, by improving air quality as well. Another priority action is transitioning to clean transportation, including electrification. So right now, transportation is dominated by gasoline and diesel vehicles. We know that that emits a lot of pollution into the air and a lot of particulate matter, and so transitioning to cleaner energy source transportation, excuse me, is really important. Um, not only does it improve public health and our air quality, but again, it helps, uh, address those climate challenges that we face and reduce emissions. So clean transportation means integrating more electric vehicles, but it also means integrating more sustainable biofuels as well. Um, and it also means increasing ridership on public transit, which the city is working on a lot with, um, the SAM On Demand project, as well as supporting and promoting active mobility like biking. And then finally, uh, one of our actions is to integrate sustainability into city processes. As Josh mentioned, we are already doing a lot as a city and as a community and have been doing so for over a decade. Um, but we have opportunity to do even more and to integrate certain parts of the plan, um, into our city processes and policies. So this year, we're going to be looking at how we can integrate aspects of the sustainability plan into the budget process. As far as next steps go, so I mentioned the public comment period, open through the 21st. Um, we would really love to have city council members review the plan and provide feedback and any questions that you may have. This plan is community-wide, and it's really important that we're working with this council and our community stakeholders to implement this plan. Once all public comment is finalized, we will integrate that into the plan, finalize the plan, and we would like to bring this plan to city council for adoption via resolution in the spring, once the plan is finalized. And with that, I am done, and if we have time, happy to take any questions.
Counselor Erickson, you have a question on the phone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I've had a little bit of time to go through some of this, and I have several questions, but I know there's probably some other questions as well. Um, thank you for the offer to provide feedback. Uh, I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I wish that maybe a council member would have been included. There is a robust group of people, and for changes of this magnitude, I just really feel it's important to have, um, someone from the council, one of us, uh, be a part of it, but we will provide feedback, I'm sure. Um, one of the things I wanted to ask is the fiscal impact. You mentioned what this will look like for the budgetary process in the years to come. Has there been anything done with that yet? And if so, what is some of the fiscal impact for, say, housing or other types of things?
Thank you, Counselor Erickson. Um, great question when talking about cost. Um, it's a concern of ours, too, um, and we want to be making sure that we're, we have resources to allocate toward these initiatives. Um, so we haven't, well, we're at the beginning stages of integrating this plan and some of the policies into our budgeting process. So, you know, things we're looking at, because clean transportation will be such a focus, we're looking at how we can, um, build out an EV readiness plan, which a lot of other communities have, and that will help us have a cohesive strategy on how we work with other metro areas on a, um, adequate EV charging infrastructure in the community. Um, regarding, you know, how, what other costs may be, so it, it's easiest to talk about the cost of initiatives, the cost of the plan by taking it initiative by initiative. So thinking about electric vehicles, you know, one of the areas of the plan is to promote EV adoption, um, and we know that EV sticker price is more than a gas comparable at this point. There's research that shows that total cost of ownership for an EV is cheaper, actually, and so as the, the sticker price reaches price parity with a gas comparable, that will be, um, an easier decision, um, financially for people. Um, but you're right, it is, it is something that we want to consider. Did I, did I miss something?
Well, and, and one of the things that I would add to that is, is, you know, we have such a housing shortage, and so I'm, I'm, I am 100% supportive of sustainability where it makes sense, but not at the rate that it's going to maybe, um, slow down housing any more than it already is. And so those are important details that we'll need to work through. My other question, well, and as you talked about electrification, this is certainly in my wheelhouse. There is a state group that is meeting. Um, if you look at the Electrify America map, South Dakota is extremely behind all other states. Um, there was a lawsuit and a lot of money given for Volkswagen, and so you'll start to see some of those, um, charging stations popping up across the state, but with weather and temperature, uh, statewide, those, those places have to be a little bit closer because they don't make it as long if, if you're charging your car and if you have, um, your windshield wipers on and all of, all of that. EVs are also extremely heavier than other vehicles, and so the wear and tear on the roads, I think that, you know, you have to look at what makes sense as far as that extra wear and tear on the roads versus the outputs of EVs. And so I certainly support EVs. I got to ride in one this week, and, uh, they're, they're really neat cars, but they do come with challenges. So my last thing I would leave with is, why not just have the city take the lead first versus, um, saying, "We're going to roll this out and make everyone do it"? How about we, we take it on as a city and say, "Hey, we're going to change our fleet to EV. Hey, we're going to change our buildings to have green standards. We're going to change our design for whatever it is." First and foremost, to test that out, but also balancing the expense to the taxpayer for this.
Thank you for that comment. Very helpful feedback, and I agree that the city should be leading, and that's one of our goals in the, in the next years. Um, we have slated a pilot for our first fleet EV this year, so we're really excited about that, and we'll be monitoring that and seeing how we can continue that rollout. Thank you for your feedback.
Other counselors. Counselor Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for the presentation. I, I agree. It's kind of one of those where, when you throw it out there to people, do you care about the environment? Do we want to continue to do what we can to for the future and this type of thing? I think in a general conversation, most people will say, "Of course," but it all kind of comes down to, as Counselor Erickson, Erickson had brought up, you know, fiscal impact and the brass tacks. Um, how does it impact the housing and the transportation, and then what does it cost? And by doing this, are we putting obstacles in the way of, you know, everything from industry to business? So I need to do a lot more homework on the bill in general and do a lot of the reading in here, but in general, when you're talking about the fiscal impact of, on our budget and that type of thing, is there a number out there right now where it's looking at total, this is what we're looking at for an impact?
As far as the implementation of the, the full plan?
When you talk about it impacting the budget, yes. Is there?
We don't have that number. Um, I, I think it's important to note, a lot of the, the items in the plan are happening similarly, sort of parallely. Um, and so, for example, um, Excel has really robust targets to reduce their emissions. Um, they provide the majority of our electricity in our community. They have set those targets, um, outside of this process, and so they're moving toward those on their own. We are sort of facilitating the gaps, um, but we don't have a, a full number.
Okay. Um, yeah, well, it'll certainly be an interesting conversation for the next few weeks. I'm, I will be curious and be digging into the facts and that have questions as well, but yeah, I think it'll always, as again, comes down to the, the dollar and how does it impact everything else, so, but I appreciate the input.
Yeah, and if I could add just one other piece of, of the financial cost, I think, um, sometimes it's hard to have the quantified cost of these types of act, well, the, the cost of inaction is hard to, to bring into the picture. So when you're talking about cost-benefit analysis, um, a lot of research has shown that if we don't act, uh, quickly on a lot of these issues, we will face even higher costs in the future due to infrastructure damage, due to natural system loss. And a lot of those pieces can't be quantified in dollar figures. You know, we can't quantify, uh, the cost of the loss of an ecosystem, for example. So thinking of, thinking often in terms of cost of inaction is a helpful, helpful frame in this work.
Yeah, that's what definitely makes it a challenge in the whole conversation.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Neitzler?
There's also, on both sides, there's also costs of sky-high energy prices and rolling blackouts if you go too far. Um, so I, I'm looking at your plan. I looked at the survey. One of the important questions that wasn't, I don't think was asked that I saw, and, and I've seen it asked in other venues is, um, so there's questions such as, is this important to? The, where the rubber really hits the road is if you, do you ask somebody, "Would you pay more?" Would you pay more for your electric bill? What if your electric bill went up $50 a month? Would you pay $5,000 more for, for your, for a car to do this? Are you willing to pay $10,000 more for a house for all of this stuff? Um, so, um, was there any discussion about cost and, and what, what amount of cost should citizens be willing to bear for this?
Great question. I don't know if I can fully answer that last part. Um, for the first part of the question, we did not include a financial question. There was talks of it when we looked at other communities' questionnaires, and we kind of used that as a, as a model for ours. Um, we saw that some did, but not all of them did, and so we chose not to.
Okay. Uh, the plan discusses, uh, moving up to, and we've, this came up at some other point, moving up the standard for energy building codes, and then a, a number of other things such as, uh, going away from natural gas. How much would that add to the cost of homes, and, uh, has the HBA had input into any of these changes?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in thinking about the energy code, right now, we're at the amended 2018 Energy Code, which, to my understanding, is, is about the 2009 Energy Code, so we're behind a few cycles. Um, we've had some analysis done that has shown if we move to the 2018 code, the incremental cost would be approximately 2,800, and that's based on the Department of Energy's modeling. Um, the, the point about that, too, is that that payback period is about five to eight years because the utility bills are significantly decreased because of the energy efficiency. And so, um, you know, sometimes the challenge with sustainability efforts is we have that higher incremental cost, that upfront cost that's a bit higher, and then you have the return on investment later, and the challenge is how do you fund that, that initial piece? So that's something that would love to hear your feedback on. Um, but, you know, when we're thinking about affordable housing, the longevity of the home that lasts for maybe 50 to 100 years, um, having lower utility bills that are built to the, that a home is built to the 2018 Energy Code, you know, after year eight, they've, they've made back the investment and they save money. So it can be framed as an affordable housing component, but it does take that initial investment. Did I miss a part of the question?
No, 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 I, I think you got it. I, I would maybe challenge whether we should force people to do that or let them make the decision. Natural gas, um, it seems to, natural gas seems to be disfavored in this. Um, have you talked to the natural gas companies, and would you, uh, be for prohibiting people from using natural gas in their homes going forward?
We don't have any mandates in the plan. I think that's really important to note. Um, and we have reached out to Mid-American, our largest gas supplier here. They know about our efforts, um, and they actually let us know that they, too, as a company, have net zero emissions targets as well.
Okay. Um, so how would you propose to, what, what is the average citizen going to be, what are they going to be facing? Are we talking about just ideals that we're encouraging people to do? Or are we talking about wide-ranging changes that we're going to say, "You have to buy an electric car," or "You're going to be penalized if you don't," or the whole, this whole litany of, there's a lot of things here, so just in general.
That's a great question. Um, no, generally, we're not mandating any actions. Um, we are doing a lot of encouraging and supporting and promoting, um, the transition to electric vehicles, for example, but we are not mandating somebody replace their current vehicle with an EV. Um, ultimately, how we want to come at that is, you know, as somebody's replacing a vehicle, you know, take a look at an EV. Is there a comparable option? That's kind of the approach that we would take. Um, so, so no mandates in the plan at all, and as far as what, what was, I'm sorry, what was the first part of your question? What, um, the?
You're putting me on the spot. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
It's fine. If I think of it, I'll, I can ask you. So, I, I think you did, did fine. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll go to Counselor Kylie.
Well, thank you. First of all, this is a plan. I mean, it's, it's, it's nothing that's, I mean, you're, you're just formulating a plan, very early stages. You haven't decided you're going to do this, you're not going to do this, correct?
I, I would say that's right. It's, it's a guiding framework for us.
Yeah, so in terms of, I, you know, I kind of hate to hear terms like force or mandates because I think we're a long way from doing any of that. We're exploring what the possibilities are, and it's, and we, we really should be because the survey shows that, it sounds like a game show, but anyway, the survey does show that there is a legitimate concern out there, and rightfully so, because the environment that we're currently operating in and the way our energy sources, especially reliance on fossil fuels, is just not a sustainable process now. Uh, there's going to be a point where we can't afford to make changes, that if we rely on what we currently have, that is currently maybe more affordable than the alternative, that's going to flip, and whether that will, probably not in my lifetime, or maybe in the lifetime of other members on this council, but it most definitely is going to. I mean, we talk about the housing industry, the cost of lumber, the way that's escalated and has impacted the cost of, um, of, of housing. We do need to look at alternative, uh, materials, which will require that we look at our building codes and, and adopt and adapt those codes to, uh, changing times. and adopt and adapt those codes to changing times. You know, years ago, probably at least six years ago, I toured a net zero housing development in Austin, Texas, which they, each home, actually developed enough energy that energy was going there, selling energy back to the grid. And it's just, unfortunately, in six years, it hasn't really gone much, hasn't moved much further. A lot of that is the cost factor involved. But I think we're beginning to get to the point where some of these alternatives are catching up to the normal building standards. But there's a lot that we need to consider in addition to housing here, too. Just water usage and our carbon dioxide emissions and things of that nature. So that's where I do believe that the city needs to be leading in that. So I was glad to see the point that integrating sustainability into the city processes, that if we're going to eventually encourage others, we need to be leading by an example as well, too. And switching our fleet of vehicles over to EVs when we can and when it's actually price effective. But I guess, before we ever got to forcing people or mandating people, would we not offer incentives? I mean, that's the development that I toured in Austin. There were incentives to participate in the project that made it worth their while. I mean, we've offered that in our past with washers that use less water or toilets that use less water with each flush and things of that nature. So can you talk about what incentives have maybe been thrown out there and addressed?
Yeah, that's a great, great feedback and great question. Thank you. And that reminds me that a lot of the language in the plan, the verbiage, is encourage and incentivize behaviors. So encourage and incentivize EV adoption. One example of that, to your question, some municipalities offer, you know, a $50 to $100 rebate working with dealerships on an EV purchase. So that's one type of approach. And a lot of states also have that incentive. Ours doesn't, but that's one type of approach. Our utilities offer incentives to purchase electric heat pumps, to replace gas furnaces. So that's another option. And I thank you for bringing that up because I forgot, and that is a big part of the plan, the incentivizing.
And then just a last comment. You know, we absolutely do not want to make things, people are having a difficult time the way it is making ends meet. We don't want to make that any more difficult. But we can't afford to just stick our head in the sand either and hope that things are going to change. Because, well, they are going to change, but they're going to continue to change to the negative unless we're adapting and making these changes. So I'm glad that you're looking at that, and that we'll be prepared to gradually phase things in as we can. Thank you.
Councilor Brecky.
Not really a question, maybe just a couple of statements. My fellow council members might remember, it was about two years ago that I introduced a bee and butterfly ordinance, and it was to let honeybees grow. And when I did that, I said, you know, this is a teeny tiny thing, almost miniscule, but it's part of a larger conversation about sustainability and that is something that the city should, you know, really get into and show leadership in. And at that time, I was a huge proponent of having a full-time employee assigned to developing a master plan for sustainability and climate control. So I couldn't be happier to be part of this process as we move it through the city. And I couldn't be happier to see the city take on its leadership role. The devil's in the details, and everybody will have a lot of opinions, and they'll have a lot of discussion already is today. But I do think that it's incumbent on the city, as the largest city and the economic engine for the state, to be the leader in this. And a couple of things I found out when I delved into it at that time that I think would be helpful for my fellow council members to know is there's a couple of just good news things that just happened randomly that allow some exciting options for us. And one is, I learned that, you know, we had just recently, just, you know, before I came onto the council, had built a new electric transform station. And that can allow us, we don't have to build that infrastructure. It's already there. We already have a large capacity for electric. So that was just, you know, lucky timing and good news. Another thing that I learned is that when we, as we're rebuilding our water reclamation plant, it is going to have already all this state-of-the-art reverse osmosis capability so that it's not, not, so it's highly possible that we could have a goal to pump drinking water standards into the Big Sioux River, which is what, you know, Los Angeles is doing, you know? And to get a higher-than-EPAs standard goal. And then also learned at the same time that John Morrell was upgrading its facilities just, you know, just again, a natural process. And they also are setting goals themselves for, you know, setting higher-than-EPAs minimum standards, you know, for pumping into the Big Sioux River. So that allows a lot of opportunity from a sustainability standpoint for us to actually take action and take action fast. And think of all the costs that will save because we already have those three things done. So those are the kinds of things that can be barriers that we are postured into, I think, really large areas to be a huge leader in, both in, you know, cleaning up the Big Sioux River and also to, you know, to electrification. And then, you know, another thing, and just in happenstance, is the whole ash bore and the fact that we're replacing our trees. And maybe, you know, turning a negative into a positive. But the fact that we have to, we're postured and we're currently dealing with the ash bore situation does allow us to develop programs for not only replacing the trees, but, you know, for future tree planting and grass plantings using those same programs that have helped us during the ash bore thing. So those are three things that, you know, I learned of as I delved into this. And, you know, I think that it's, you know, exciting and just, you know, overall, and terribly excited about, you know, having a master plan to guide us and look forward to be a part of that process and your leadership. So thank you so much.
Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One suggestion that I have, and I know it's been talked about already, and you've already, you know, talked about it, but you have to talk to the Home Builders Association, plus our developers in town. And because I would say that this plan is not going to necessarily make them be green or self-sustaining because they probably already are green. So I'd be curious of that code specifically that you talked about, the 2018 code. What specific examples in there are the ones that are going to make them better than we are in 2008 when that was adopted or whatever the year was? Because when we do put that code in place, that is, you know, technically a mandate, which is what it is. But let, you know, when we're calling an apple an apple, that's what we need to call that. So we need to be in with all of those industries. The Home Builders Association, the apartment builders, and the multifamily, you know, housing. Because that's really going to have an impact on the people that, you know, in the middle of March, are going to come in front of us and talk about their home valuations. That's going to be a part of that conversation. So, you know, that all impacts it. So I just really encourage you to dig in there, and no need to respond.
Thank you.
Councilor Neitzler.
So the plan discusses the premise, and this isn't original. This is something that's widely held by many, that we're reaching a tipping point and that if we don't act, we may be facing Armageddon. If that is the case, why would you not mandate these things? I mean, isn't it, I mean, if you accept that premise, wouldn't it be, only make sense that you would force people to do these things?
Well, great question. I don't know if I'm best to answer that. But, you know, as Councilor Kylie mentioned, using an incentivizing approach can also get a lot of work done. And so that's the path that we've taken in this plan.
If something doesn't make any sense financially, should we incentivize it? If we looked and we saw that it just didn't pencil out because we think it's a good thing?
I guess if we're, I'm not quite sure if you can be more specific about what you mean about the plan.
No, no, well, I mean, incentives, let's say, for electric cars or whatever else. If they're not going to make sense for, or whatever. I mean, here's another question. So as a city, if it's going to cost us a few million dollars extra, let's say, to go to electric cars, should we do it? Let's say we find out a total cost of ownership is going to cost more money. Should we do it as a city for the ideal?
Sure, I think that's a great question. I think the benefit there is that we are reducing our emissions and solving a lot of the challenges that we face. So while there's that initial, that upfront cost that I mentioned before, the benefit is long-term and wide-ranging. So with EVs in your example, we would have air quality improvements. So that's a huge thing, and we would be reducing our emissions significantly as well, which are ultimately some of our goals.
I'll accept that. The one thing I would just challenge is, but both at a city level and an individual level, we just have to, what is the balance? There's got to be a tipping point, not to use that term, but at what point is, does it not make financial sense? How much are we willing to ask people to add to the price of their home? Are we going to make them add to the price of their home? Or how much should we expect people to pay? I mean, if they want to do it idealistically, that's fine. But what is that, there's got to be some sort of a financial consideration, I guess, would be my, in looking at all of this. So that would be my input, is balancing both sides of those coin. That's my constructive feedback for you.
Thank you.
Councilor Kylie.
Once again, is there any intention of mandating anything at this point in time?
No, there, no. The language again is encourage, incentivize. We want to ultimately see these types of initiatives take off, but we want to use them, or we want to do that in those types of methods. That's what's in the plan.
And I think another way of answering Councilor Neitzler's question is it's a, we're in a situation where it's kind of pay me now or pay me later scenario, too. And as I said, you know, maybe it's not us sitting at this dais, but it's going to be our grandchildren or at least great-grandchildren. So it's something that we do need to explore now. We can't just kick the can down the road and then expect that we're going to implement it magically when it's, when the technology is available that makes it affordable or when it is out of necessity. Thank you.
Councilor Starr.
Yes, thank you. Interesting discussion this afternoon. And my only question is, did the city apply for any of the VW settlement money?
We did. We applied for five locations and a total of nine charging stalls. We did not get the funding. The state went with DC fast charging, which is typically along interstate corridors. So they went a different approach than what would be applicable for us.
Awesome, thank you. And I just reiterate, these are the kind of questions you get when we don't get included in the process. It's disappointing that there wasn't someone from the council on the original committee. It's a policy discussion that we're trying to have, and the administration's making the policy decisions. And it always concerns me when I hear things like, we'll bring you the final plan for approval later, which means then the plan's done. And if we don't get a chance to weigh in on it, then people are upset that they didn't get to be part of the process. And it feels like that we're making people angry because we want to make changes or there's suggestions that we would have made that we could have put into the original plan. So this just seems like another tally mark that we're getting closer and closer to the council standing up and putting the brakes on a project just because we're not being included. So you get to feel the brunt of it this afternoon, so I apologize for that part.
No, I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Others?
Mr. Chair.
Councilor Erickson.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Just wanted to add a little bit to the, I know this plan is so much more than EV, but it just happens to be in my wheelhouse. So two statements that I have. Well, I agree that maybe these aren't mandates. If we accept the new building code and fast-track that forward, it is a mandate then. And that is the change, and that's the expense. But I'm interested in knowing what is it going to cost when we have all these things on there to building a home? When we're in a housing crisis, now's not the time to add extra things on. As far as the EV readiness plan and that, great question, Councilor Starr. My question on top of that is, I was just looking at the website, and it appears that there's another round of grants. So it's certainly encourage the city to apply for those again. You never know. We did just have a bill here in Tier that you can't resell electricity unless you are a provider. And so that bill, it's already been, I believe it's sailed through, it might even be signed, now allows folks to be able to do that. So the conversation is huge as far as who's paying the fair share for road taxes? Who's paying the electrification? How does that look? What does it look like? It is so much bigger than saying we should do this. So I support having, hey, let's encourage people. I don't think any of us on the council have EVs or solar panels or any of that. But if we want to encourage it, I think that's a great plan. My other question would be, has the city installed any electrical charging stations anywhere on its own dime?
We have not. Our intent was to have the first round of installations this year. That's why we applied for the VW funding. And we didn't get the funding, but we're still exploring how we might install the first charging stations.
We've never had any installed and then taken out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I believe there were some installed, this was prior to my time, in one of the parking ramps, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Why were they taken out then?
I believe.
Why were they taken out?
Yep, I believe it was because of low usage rates at that time. And I think this was a few years ago before the uptick in EV adoption. But I can look into that and get back to you on that.
That would be great, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Thanks for the presentation. I look forward to carrying on the conversation.
Thank you. Councilor Neitzler.
Yeah, I just wanted to close by saying, my point was not to beat you up personally. That's not my style. But I just have, I do have serious concerns about the plan in general and the weighting and the balancing of cost. So, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, sometimes it's the person there that has to field the question for everybody that you've represented, all these groups that came together. I just have a couple of quick points. You know, it's going to be a delicate balancing act that this council will take forward. These are the discussions that's all over the United States, all over the country right now, on how much financial resource do you put in for the future? It's not for today. Whether we're talking about $2,800 for housing, that could be a significant barrier for those people trying to get in. We realize the long-term impact, but if I could look to my friends in rural states that are putting buffer strips along waterways, they're losing profit by doing that, but they're looking for the long-term environmental impacts to do that. So we're going to, as a council, we will have these discussions on what we can afford to do for the city. And I think that, as most of us have said, if we can't lead by showing an example of where we put our money where our mouth is, the second part about requirements through mandates and through ordinances will never work unless we do it first. And that's the position I think I will have, that we better do it first before we ask anybody else to do it. And personally, Councilor Erickson, I do have a solar panel and I use it quite frequently. So it works really neat. Actually, it's really neat. So, Councilor Brecky.
Just one final statement. There's different ways to modify behavior, and probably one of the worst ways is mandates. And there's a lot of creative ways in government on how to modify behavior, and one is leadership, you know, by, you know, by leading out. And so I think that the mandate, though, that we have on your survey, if you can flip up the, you know, the little, the green sheet. I mean, the public is ready for us to take a leadership role and to do something powerful. And it'll be balancing which of those things we can afford to do first. Like I just mentioned, we've already got a water reclamation plant that can impact. We've got, you know, grid that can provide, you know, provide the electricity. So all we have to do is put in the infrastructure and incentivize. So those things alone, you know, can happen until maybe the cost of housing goes down. So it's a matter of prioritization and, you know, and setting those right policies that are right for the right time. But I, you know, with that mandate, I would just, just as a reminder, when we, you know, way back, when we put in place, when we had to do, in our landfill, we had to put standards for our landfill. And we did it before the federal government set down mandates. We did it three years when we knew the mandates were coming down. And this city, they brought in more recyclables than we could figure out what to do with. We had such voluntary compliance that even after the federal mandates came down, we went for years without mandating anything. I don't even know if it's mandated right now. I think this city, with this kind of a survey result... I think this city, with this kind of a survey result, will follow us if we lead. And, and we can do it in a way that, that is a coming together for the city and the leadership of government to do the right thing.
Thank you for your presentation. Very well done. I look forward to the final report.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our second 2022 election update. Tom Greco.
I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we're at with the election right now. Just wanted to provide some key highlights on obviously important dates, but also some of the things that we're doing in the office, and also in partnership with the counties to get ready for the election on April 12th and possibly May 3rd. So on this title slide right here, some key dates. Obviously, the, the election's going to be on April 12th, a Tuesday. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. But do want folks to know that the registration window for those elections, the runoff as well, May 3rd, closes 15 days before the election. So we urge people to check your voter registration. I'll show you how to do that in a moment, but also to get a voter registration in if you need to update it or if you just need to get registered, period. Consequently, March 28th is also the day that we start absentee voting. So that day, mail-out mail ballots will go out and we'll open up in-person absentee voting. I'll, I'll discuss that again as we go through, and I also have the dates up there for the runoff election. But really just want to hit some, the, the key point right now, we held our ballot drawing this morning at 10:00 AM here in Carnegie, had some candidates show up, some of the press, some staff to take a look at the drawing. You could see the results that are up there for each one of our races. We also, so this is our ballot, and we'll also have two charter amendments on the ballot that were, our charter amendments consequently approved for recommendation on the ballot by the city council. We will not have a school board race on here. You may have seen in the news that they have two candidates for two seats, so they won't require an election. That'll make the logistics on our end a little easier, but overall, you know, obviously we, we want to see races out there, but it just turns out that this election, we won't be combining with the school board. So they don't have to take any formal action with us, we just won't have it, but they will pass a resolution by their board on March 14th, I believe, and obviously I was notified this morning that they will not have a question on the ballot. Okay, so some key dates here, we've obviously gotten through some, but just want to highlight a couple more. So March 28th, I can't reiterate that enough, that is the, that is when registration closes for the, for the April 12th election. But moving down that list there, just remember absentee voting in person will end the night prior, 5:00 PM the night prior to the election, so 5:00 PM on April 11th. Ballots can be received by mail up until 7:00 PM the night of the election, and also at the Minnehaha County Administration Building, there will be drop boxes out there for folks to drop their ballots off. But again, make sure you check your registration and get registered or update your registration if you need to. We'll have the election on the 12th count that night, and we should know the results. Of course, if there's a close race, then, then we may have to do a recount, that will, that will be another topic for discussion. But if we do have a runoff, we'll know the night of the election. And if that's the case, then we'll hold a ballot drawing the next morning at 8:30 here in Carnegie Town Hall for those, those individuals that will be on it. So those would be the top two vote-getters for each race that would require a runoff. So again, we require 50% plus one vote or a majority to be declared elected winner for the council races or the mayoral race. Then following that, we go through the same process for the runoff. If it looks like we're going to have a runoff election, I will most likely present the resolution with a lot of blanks on it the night of the April 13th elec, or April 13th council meeting, and just ask for an amendment to insert all of the information so that we can canvas those results from the day prior and move on with the planning for the runoff election. And of course, May 17th is the start of terms. That'll include an installation ceremony typically at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, followed by a couple meetings, and it'll, the evening will conclude traditionally with the election of the chair, vice chair, and operations member. Okay, so just want to talk some logistics for your awareness. We have 71 precincts total, they'll be, which will be voting at 52 locations throughout the city. Now, a couple of our precincts, the registration lists will be combined, I don't want to get too far into that. We will conduct it like we have in the past for the most part, but we'll be at 52 locations, so that means that some folks will be voting, that some precincts will obviously be doubled up at certain voting locations. In some locations, we have up to three precincts. We always do our best to make sure there's proper signage so that folks coming in know which table to go to, and we also have some other tools out there for people to figure out, particularly where they're going to vote and, and which table, if they're in a combined location, they need to go to. Some things that we will do and have done, first, the postcard notifications. We'll get those out within the next week and a half to all those people who have new voting locations from the last election, or those individuals who have a new precinct designation, which also means a new district designation. So we'll send those postcards out. In the past, we sent them out about a week out before the election. I don't think there's really a reason to wait that long. I prefer to get them out a little earlier this year. The other thing we've done already is we've printed the water bill inserts, just a note that will say city school election on it. Just remember, we're, there will not be a school race on the ballot. Those will go out with the March bills, so I'm not sure if they've actually already gone out or not, but we had them printed last week and sent over to utility billing. The other thing that voters could do on their own, and we encourage them to do it, I have some screenshots of the voter information portal here. If you go, this is accessible through our city election page, but also going to the South Dakota Secretary of State's webpage. Click on the voter information portal. If you know your name and your birth date and/or zip code, you can determine where your voting location is. So that voter registration name search, that's the data that you enter, you fill out one of those code things, and a new screen will pop up which will show you where your voting location is among other voter information. We encourage people to look at this again to make sure that you have the right address on file and that all your information's up to date. And if you submit an absentee ballot, it'll also be tracked on that page as well. So again, we encourage people to take a look at that. All right, election workers, this is really one of the heavier lifts that we do for each one of the elections. It's no small task to, to pull off an election. So we, we will have 67 election boards for those 71 precincts on election day. Right now, we have a little over 230 workers lined up, and those are just the election boards for election day. So we're looking good in that respect. Expect to see on the March 15th agenda, as I did in 2020 and, and again in 2018, there'll be something on the consent agenda because it requires governing board approval for the election board workers. Some other things that we'll be doing this year and paying closer attention to than we did in the past, as a result of the absentee ballot task force that was conducted after the 2020 primary, and also just general lessons learned over the years. Number one, we're going to be pulling on additional folks to assist with absentee processing in those weeks leading up to the election. So traditionally, we'll have one or two folks that we bring on on a temporary basis to, to operate the computers, check folks in for the in-person voting, and they've, you know, during downtime would get ballots ready for mailing out or check ballots in that came in the mail. We're going to have separate people to do that this time around. The county did it to an extent for the primary in 2020 and to a larger extent for the general. It works well, and I think we have a good plan going forward. So we're, we're looking up to, we're looking to bring on up to additional, an additional five people each day to assist with that process. As you remember, when I presented the budget back several months ago last year, I can't remember when, we did have an uptick in the, in the cost of the election, and a large part of it is due to, number one, an increase in pay for the election board workers, but also bringing on extra folks to assist with absentees before the election. And of course, we'll play it by ear. If we don't have the volume that we, that we anticipated, then we'll adjust the workers accordingly. Likewise, if we have a higher volume, we'll, we'll adjust as well. Absentee boards, we'll have 24 folks on election day to process those ballots. One provision in state law does allow the auditor's office to check signatures beforehand. That worked in 2020 for the general election for the most part. It was tried in part for the primary, except not with, it was still sent through the election board or through the absentee boards. What we intend on doing this year is having those ballots checked by those absentee helpers, the auditor's office, prior to going to the absentee boards on election day. So that should make it a more efficient process and, and really keep us on track. And then the last thing, we'll be pulling on some additional folks to assist with the resolution boards. There'll be basically eight resolution board, or four resolution boards throughout the day, two people per tabulating machine. Again, I want to highlight the fact that we do have an additional DS 850 to count ballots on election day. So two other things I have up there, the bolded items, we'll be conducting election school in here the week of March 28th, each day at 2:00, 2:00 PM and 5:30 PM for those 230-plus workers. And then also absentee voting in person will occur at the Minnehaha County Administration Building on the second floor. Now, I just want to make a plug here because I might not have a chance to present again before the election. All of our absentee voting for the city goes through the Minnehaha County Auditor's Office. That includes Lincoln County Sioux Falls residents. So your application will go to your auditor. If you choose to vote, an application for a mail ballot goes to your auditor, whether you're Lincoln or Minnehaha. If you choose to vote in the city election in person, you'll go to the Minnehaha County Administration Building, whether you're a Lincoln Sioux Falls resident or Minnehaha. And everyone, if they get a mail ballot, it'll come from the Minnehaha County Auditor's Office. I like to make that clear because it does get confusing to some folks as the election creeps up on us. And speaking of Minnehaha, I just want to mention the great partnership we've had with Minnehaha for, for decades, I think, me personally, for about six years, and certainly the new, recently, not so new anymore, but Ben Kite, the county auditor, is joining us today to, to check out this presentation, and I just wanted to let you know, we, we have the same tempo that we've had in the past. He's brought also a, a great deal of expertise to the process and a lot of attention to detail, so I think we're, we're really excited to see this election come off, and, and I think we're in good hands. The last thing of substance here is just for election day. Now, obviously, I'm covering a few things beyond election day, but wanted to let you know that we have a statutory requirement to make sure that we conduct a public test of the tabulating machines. We'll do that on a Thursday or Friday prior to each election. That's open to the public, it's, we publish it in a newspaper, and we let folks know that they're certainly welcome to come and, and check it out. On election day, polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and as in the past, we'll be at the, at the county complex, but different from the last two elections, we'll be back inside the county administration building for counting again this year because, as you probably know, the Department of Equalization for Minnehaha has moved into the building that we've used the last couple of election cycles. So again, if there's a runoff, we'll know, most likely, election night. We'll have a ballot drawing the next morning at 8:30 in the morning, and then, as I mentioned before, we'll do the canvas, I'll propose that we do the canvas on April 13th or 19th. One final pitch, campaign finance, that still is out there, we, I've been reminding folks if they have requirements, but you can find all their camp, all the campaign finance reports online. This is just the rundown of what's due. Generally, we'll have one due before each election, the week before each election, we have one due this Thursday by 5:00 PM, and then the final one this year or associated with the election will be at the end of June into July. I encourage folks to go and look at our elections webpage, sioufals.org backslash election. You can go and look at all the latest information. Soon enough, we'll have our ballots completed within the total vote system, and those will be available online for folks to take a look at. But taking a look at our election webpage, you'll find a lot of information, particularly as it relates to absentee voting and voter registration. So we encourage people to get out there and take a look at what we have. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Counsel Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, it's always so fun to watch you get everything in gear every election season. You're just a well-oiled machine on this stuff. So anyway, when we're talking about the 230 workers, so did, did I catch it right? You've already got everybody in place and hired and ready to go, but then didn't I hear a little bit later that you may hire more or add to that? I guess my question is, if people are still interested in a position, do they go on a waiting list?
Well, certainly if people are interested, contact us. So the, the additional people will be those folks that assist with the absentees prior to the election. We still have to line up the absentee boards, those are the additional people. But we have, and I mean, it's quite possible somebody called and backed out within the last hour, but we, we generally have our set of election workers for the polling places locked in.
Okay, so if anybody is interested or?
Let us know, we'll find a place for them to help.
Find a place or have a waiting list or I'd imagine, like anything else, somebody might be sick that day, so there's, bring somebody in off the bench and that type of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, will do, thank you.
Counsel Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Greco and Mr. Kite, thank you for your work on this, and specifically, you mentioned what we learned in 2020 as we went through that process. I think it was a really interesting process to be involved in, and your guys' professionalism and your staff's professionalism is, is second to none. As you continue to improve the process, just make sure that that knowledge is shared with your staff and specifically us to why that is the case and why we have our elections potentially in April or whenever we decide to have those. So thank you for that, and I appreciate your guys' work on this, so thank you.
Counsel Neitzler.
Tom, just one question. With the school district on the cusp of canceling their election, do we have to take any formal action to recognize that?
I don't think we need to. The statute, and I'll talk to the city attorney, I just haven't had a chance, but the statute says that if you wish to combine, you have to agree to it, but the statute also says that, that there's no, if there's no contest, then there's no election. So I would assume not. However, I was notified via email that they, as of this morning, as of that second, as of the mail run, they didn't have any petitions. You know, of course, if something changed by chance within the next day or so, then we would adjust.
Anybody else?
I would just like to say, I did sit on the absentee ballot review task force that was put together after the last general election. I appreciated the, I got a deeper understanding of how the process works, and I do think that there are several ideas that, that we came up with that has been put into place to make it a great election. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have public comment. If anybody would like to speak on either of the two subjects, now is the time. Seeing none, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor pursuant to South Dakota codified law 1-25-21. Second.
Been moved in second and to move into executive session. Thank you very much. If you could clear the hall, we'd appreciate it. Oh, roll, do we have a roll call for that time?
Probably gets recommended.
Okay, we're going to, thank you, Greg. Roll call.
Council members Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Neitzler.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
I'm here.
All right, executive session, please, thank you.